It is seven o'clock. This is the January 24th regular city commission meeting. This is the second regular city commission meeting in January, and we are in commission chambers. I hope you felt welcomed as you came in this evening by our airport manager, Stephen Licklider, and also our utilities manager, Bob Priest, who served as our greeters tonight. I want to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, is recording secretary Taylor Lockhart, our city clerk Susan Daederer, Commissioner Lori Tolland.
Good evening.
Zone one, and then zone two commissioner Travis Sargent.
Good evening.
To my left and your right, we have Commissioner from zone three Susan Persis.
Good evening, everyone.
Deputy Mayor and zone four Commissioner Harold Brierley.
Good evening, folks.
Our city manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, City Attorney Randy Hayes, and way over to my left and way over to your right, we have Captain Chris Roos and Fire Chief Howard Bailey. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. At this time, if you would please silence your cellphones, we're going to have the invocation given by Pastor Mike Petrick from Harbor Baptist Church, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the invocation.
Our gracious heavenly Father, thank you for your goodness and your mercies to us yet again. Thank you, Lord, that we can come together here and do city business, and we know that if it means something to us, certainly it means something to you. And so, Father, I pray all things be done decently and in order, and God that you be just a watchful eye over all things done tonight. We give you praise, you're worth it in Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is what we call the fun part of the meeting, where we do honors, awards, proclamations, and you get to meet some of the special people who live in and make our community work. And tonight, we're very lucky to have the Ormond Beach Bills Flag Football Team, and I'll ask their coach, Jason Williams, come on up and bring your team up. These guys had an undefeated season this year, so give them a round of applause. Now, we're very proud of our athletic programs in Ormond Beach, proud of our athletic fields, and this commission and prior commissions have put a lot of effort, a lot of hard work, a lot of hours into making sure that we have great facilities. And being able to, I had the opportunity to come out and see a couple games this year. Coach, you do an amazing job with these guys, and the testament to that is the fact that they went undefeated for the season. So, wanted to have you here, recognize you. The great thing about those ballfields is that after a hard day of work, if you're a parent, you can go out there with your child, parent, guardian, significant, family member, whatever it is, and then you have the grandparents out there as well, and then you have friends of the family, and so you have all these different generations coming together to support what is our future, and these guys participating in a wholesome help activity, putting down the tech, putting down the cellphones and the iPads and everything else, getting away from the TV. It's awesome. So, we wanted to bring you here. We're going to take a picture with you, with the commission standing up behind you, but we have medals for you guys to recognize your accomplishment, and you can eat these medals. That's probably the best thing. They're chocolate medals. I don't know if you've ever had Angel Phelps, but we might as well start you young on that. Perfect. Commission, if you'll stand up, have a center behind it. All right. Congratulations. I'll ask Michael Armon Wilson to come forward. You can come up by yourself, Mike, or you can bring your family up, whatever you want to do. It's up to you. You want your family to come up?
No, they can't.
Perfect. When your brothers cheer for you like that, it's awesome to have them come forward. Good stuff. Let me tell you, I had the opportunity to be principal for a day back in November, I think it was, and at Pathways Elementary School. Joshua Jackson does an amazing job out there. Before school started, I was standing in the drop-off line, and this young man comes up, introduces himself to me, the assistant principal introduced him as well, and she explained who he was and what an impact he'd made on that school, and that he was running for student government president, correct?
Yes.
Because you're a fifth grader. Awesome. And so, I found out just a little bit ago that he was successful, he won the office. So, congratulations. So, I wanted to bring you here and recognize you. This young man's going to do great things, but we're going to present him with a proclamation tonight, and I'm going to have you hold this. And I'll read it. Got it? Your brothers can help you too if you need to. Whereas Michael Armon Wilson was born in Rochester, Minnesota, and has lived in Ormond Beach for two and a half years, and whereas Armon loves the city of Ormond Beach, as a dedicated citizen, he is always seeking new ways to contribute to the community by volunteering at beach cleanups, working at the Humane Society, and also the Women's Shelter. And whereas Armon already has a passion for politics and continually proves to be a born leader, he encourages his family to get out and vote together. He was vice president of his fourth grade class and now accomplished his goal to win the student government election for class president of his fifth grade class at Pathways Elementary. He's passionate about the war in Ukraine and comments to his parents daily regarding the activity in that country. And whereas Armon's five main values include, one, inclusion, everyone matters, two, kindness, promote kind acts and celebrate students, three, bright ideas, promoting the sharing of bright ideas and implementing them, and four, cleaner community and schools, and five, more clubs and opportunities. And whereas Armon enjoys playing tennis and participating in the United States Tennis Association League, he also plays basketball, violin, and piano, and he greatly enjoys playing with his two brothers and pet golden doodle Coco. Based on all that, now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim today, January 24th, 2023, as a day to recognize Michael Armon Wilson in the city of Ormond Beach, and encourage all residents to join with me in recognizing young Mr. Wilson for his achievements and contributions to the community. Congratulations. Now, we have a key to the city that we give to our young folks, and I've got one for you, Armon. The chief, I don't know if he made it tonight, but he has told me that, are you driving yet? Perfect. I was worried you were going to say yes to that question. Good, you should not be driving yet. Once you start driving, the chief has told me that you can exchange this, and they will dismiss a noncriminal traffic infraction, is that right?
Oh.
So, this is very valuable. You can wear it with pride and use it, use it only if you need it. So, congratulations. And then, just because I happen to have some extra medals available, I've got enough one for you and one for each of your brothers, if that's okay with Mom and Dad. Mom and Dad, you are doing an amazing job.
I'm proud of you.
If you guys will look at this a little bit, we'll get a picture with the commission.
Yay. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Audience remarks, these are regarding items not on the agenda, and tonight, we will start with Dr. Philip Shapiro.
Dr. Philip Shapiro, 140 Old Mill Run, Ormond Beach, immediate past president of Ormond Beach Historical Society. A number of years ago, at a quality of life advisory board meeting, I coined the phrase "museum corridor." The idea that I expressed was to have a newly renovated and expanded art museum to the east side of this corridor and an historic landmark cultural center, the Casements, on the west side of the corridor. The idea that was presented was to include a city historical museum and welcome center located within the historic McDonald House in the central part of this museum corridor. Such an addition would certainly benefit downtown redevelopment and commerce. At the present time, there is no venue for our residents, visitors, students, or researchers to have access to a comprehensive educational resource that explains our area's rich and extensive history. Our community should have the opportunities available to make Ormond Beach a place for recreation, education, and quality of life, and historical museum is an integral part of such opportunities. The city commission should commit itself to working with the Ormond Beach Historical Society to develop a city-owned McDonald House into a first-class technologically advanced museum. The Ormond Beach Historical Society Board of Directors is fully behind this endeavor, and we have demonstrated for over 45 years our commitment to excellent leadership and stewardship in our areas of responsibility. It's time for Ormond Beach to move forward to the next level of serving our community for the benefit of our residents and visitors. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Next is Jerry Lampy.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. The new museum, Ormond Beach Museum of History and Welcome Center, is prominent at location on Granada Boulevard, halfway between the Ormond Memorial Art Museum and Gardens. The Casements and the Hotel Ormond Puban will complete Ormond Beach's walkable museum row and become a destination attracting both residents and visitors to our downtown beachside area. It will add to the economic prosperity of downtown and beachside as recommended in the 2019 Ormond Beach Downtown Master Plan update, and it will contribute significantly to the city's quality of life. The Florida Association of Museums has reported that museums and the arts are a $120 million industry in Florida and provide over 3,200 jobs. Furthermore, the cultural tourist statistically stays longer and spends more money in an area. These cultural tourists also spend money on area restaurants and hotels, which they can access from the museum's video wall along with other local businesses and historic events and sites. With the commission's approval and supervision, the Historical Society will complete the job of renovating the McDonald House, in this case, the interior three floors that are badly in need of repair, two floors of which are currently unusable space. These efforts will ultimately bring considerable economic benefit to the Ormond Beach community and make the historic McDonald House economically viable and a point of community pride. The Ormond Beach Historical Society takes responsibility for the fundraising required to raise the $2.5 million estimate for renovation and modern museum creation and welcome center enhanced, replete with interactive and experiential technology. In fact, we have already successfully begun the private mode of the capital campaign, but further progress has been impeded by the fact that major donors, who are savvy investors, want to see that the city will approve a 15-year lease for the McDonald House. Currently, the final obstacle to arriving at a long-term lease is the tennis center located at the McDonald House. Therefore, we respectfully request that the city seek a solution for the tennis center as part of its strategic planning process early this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Randy J.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm here to talk about the McDonald House as well, and what I'd like to do is give a statement of benefits of the museum and kind of like the issues that a locality has without a museum. So, first of all, I'm an historian, so, and I'm also on the Ormond Beach Historical Society's Board of Directors. So, I do a lot of traveling, I go to a lot of museums, and the first thing you notice when you go into a community, if they have a museum, they're stating a fact that they enjoy their local history, they're proud of it, they're showing it. It's really community identity, it's community purpose, and that's something that's lacking here in Ormond Beach. Like Dr. Shapiro said, it brings in visitors, travelers, locals, people come to town, what's the first thing you want to do? You want to take them to your local museum, you want to show off your history, you want to show them that your locality has a lot of purpose, and it had a lot of parts of the beginning of where we're at today came from these great pieces of our local history's past. Some of the communities in the area, smaller than Ormond Beach, they have museums, Flagwood Beach, Holly Hill, they're fantastic, they're small, but they show community pride, and they show that that community is really proud of itself and where they came from. If you have a building to house all your local artifacts, a lot of things start to happen. Some of the artifacts that we run across, people don't know where to donate them to. They're being lost to history. They're being sold on eBay for a nickel and a dollar, they're being put out to the curb to be thrown out. You lose these artifacts forever. Right now, we can't tell people we have a place to put these artifacts in, so, there's all kinds of windows and things like that from the Ormond Hotel that are still around, but I suspect they're going to be disappearing in the next decade or so because there's really nowhere to house them. Some of the other things that we're losing is grant money, donation money. If there was a museum here and up and running, we could file for all kinds of grants, people in general area could donate money, and other things like artifacts, like I said, and also if you don't have a museum, it's kind of like your community identity is being diluted a little bit, and that's why, you know, we're really all about trying to get this museum in place and out there for the benefits of the community and the whole area in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bobby Coleman.
Bobby Coleman, 28, Iroquois Trail, in the wonderful city of Ormond Beach. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, my friends and commissioners here, Ms. Shanahan. I want to let you know, our city is rich in quality of life. It's rich in culture, education, activities, heritage, and so much more. We have a beautiful art museum that you and our residents support. We have fine schools that are producing graduates that we hope will continue to live here. We have a multitude of activities and ballfields to provide for youth and seniors. We have considerable history here, from the Tamuca Indians to an 18th century sugar mill and rum distillery, a home built from the salvage remains of a shipwreck, a home where the richest man in the world lived and died, the original racing on the beach, and famous people who wintered each year here. But you know what we don't have? A museum with our abundant history to our area, a place where our citizens, our children, and our visitors can go to see what a wonderful city we have that preserves its past. We already have a central location along museum row or museum corridor that would lend itself as a place for residents as well as visitors to learn about our heritage. It would be a place for our children to study and learn about the city and state they're growing up in. Some of you know that Bob and I do a lot of traveling in our RV. We often stay in campgrounds near small towns and enjoy visiting the historical museums. We always come away saying, if they can support one, why can't we? And more and more travelers are looking for learning experiences and ecological adventures, not just sitting on the beach all day. I ask that you help them as well as us for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. And Bobby, if you, when you're standing next to Bob, if you guys can stand up for just a second. Commission, I don't know if you're aware, I had the opportunity to attend the Civic League of the Halifax Areas Award Ceremony on Saturday evening, and our own Ormond Beach power couple here, Bob and Bobby Coleman, were presented the 2223 Beacon Award for everything they've done in this community over the last forty-some years, and they deserve a round of applause. All right, and now we go to Dwight Selby. Three minutes, Commissioner.
I was talking to Joyce, maybe I could get five. Okay, well, thank you all. Dwight Selby, 1535 Oak Forest Drive. First of all, it's really, it's an honor to be here tonight to address you, and congratulations to the new members of the commission and to the returning members of the commission. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the first step on the shelter. I have three things I want to bring to your attention. The first one is the results from 2022, and there's a flyer at your places that tell you about the impact of the shelter. The second thing is, I want to talk a little bit about panhandling and a strategy that was developed by Daytona Beach City Commissioner Stacy Cantu. And the third thing is the gala, the first annual, first inaugural, first ever mayor's gala, which will be a week from Saturday at the Daytona Beach Hilton, and we've heard from three of you, and we hope that everybody will be able to make it with your spouses if they're available also. And so, let me just begin with the, with this flyer, the Impact Statement for 2022 Impact Report. I just want to highlight a couple of things. In 2022 and last year, there were 380 people that resided in the, that were in the program at the shelter. 223 of those people, 60% of them graduated, and they are now living independently. So, people who were living without shelter, you know, out in the woods or wherever, are now living independently. 96 people got jobs, and in the bottom left corner of this, you know, and this, these are pretty amazing results in light of the challenges that this population faces, and I'll just read that real quick for the benefit of the audience. 90% of the residents have underlying chronic medical conditions, depression, addiction, bipolar, PTSD, diabetes, cancer, and more. So, this is a very challenged, physically challenged population. The second item I wanted to talk about was panhandling. You probably have read in the, oh man, I'm out of time. Okay, well, I'm going to do this real quick. Daytona Beach is going to be putting up these signs, and they're going to make this artwork available to us, along with a QR code that allows people to donate directly to the shelter, really versus giving money to panhandlers, okay? And I think this is a really good thing. The QR code is big enough that you can see it from your car, and you can flash it with your phone, and it takes you directly to the first step shelter site with a donate button and stuff like that. I would encourage that we're going to make the artwork available to Ormond, and I hope that we would consider putting these up in the appropriate places.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would have paid the money before to hear that buzzer go off, but I just got to do it for free. And Commissioners, Commissioner Cantu brought those to the elected roundtable Monday morning, and those are in Daytona's colors, but she said we could use our own colors, and I immediately, as you probably did, started thinking of places where they might work really well, so, thank you for that. We'll see you on the fourth. Next is Councilman Troy Kent, Volusia County Councilman Troy Kent.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, it is an honor to be before you this evening. I want to start and just say, these are Troy Kent's comments, these are not the comments or endorsements of the county council. This is Troy Kent, 130 Magnolia Drive, Ormond Beach, Florida. One of my main goals is to be impactful for the residents of Volusia County. I am hopeful that the cities I represent, Ormond Beach, Holly Hill, and Daytona Beach, will have the best relationship with the county that you have ever had or had in quite some time. I am here to help any way that I can. Ms. Shanahan, Mr. Hayes, feel free to reach out if anything that you think I can do to help our residents in Volusia County. Our first meeting, we made some changes, and it's important to note that our meetings will no longer start at 9:30 a.m. The first meeting of every month at the county council chambers will start at 10 a.m. The second meeting will start at 4 p.m. It gives an opportunity for people that work during the day to participate in their local government, and I think that's important. So, the meeting times have been changed. Two more things I want to talk to you about. I successfully have an item on the agenda in a month, it's actually February 21st, to talk about, a discussion item, on having dog-friendly sections on our beach. To me, I'm as a dog lover, this is To me, as a dog lover, this is a way that we can impact our residents in a positive way. It is low-hanging fruit, in my opinion. It will not cost a lot of money. It can be done in a common sense way, where our dogs are leashed in a specific area. If Ormond Beach would like to have that in their area, I would highly recommend you all talk about it as an elected body and possibly get a letter to your county council stating where you stand on the issue. In two months, and by the way, this is my 19th day sworn in, in two months, I have successfully been able to get the discussion item about the pay structure for vehicles on the beach. It's no, it's no surprise to you all where I stand on what Volusia residents should pay to get on our beach, and it's a big fat goose egg zero. All others should pay, and I don't mind saying handsomely, but Volusia residents shouldn't. And I've heard $25 isn't a lot of money. Well, if it's not a lot of money, then we shouldn't be charging it for our residents. Last but not least, I held my first district dialogue for residents yesterday in Ormond By the Sea. We had over 60 people show up. It was fantastic. And I'll just say my next one is Monday, May 15th, at the Ormond Beach Library, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. Have a nice night.
Thank you, Councilman. And next is Connie Colby.
Good evening, Connie Colby, 108 Roble Lane, Ormond Beach. I didn't plan to be here tonight, but today I happened to be going to Walmart from where I live and found out that Hand Avenue had been closed between Clyde Morris and Williamson, except for local traffic going into Chelsea Place. If this commission has any influence with construction that's going out that way by Williamson, if this is going to be a long-term closure, I would appreciate it if somebody would do something to prevent this from happening or at least provide some way for one lane to go west, because that is a big way of people from where I live going out to that section of town and the hospital south of that Walmart, any way out that way. It also puts a lot more traffic onto Granada because people were going out and they were returning up to Chelsea Place because they were missing the sign that was off to the right side of the road, coming back, going across Clyde Morris, which was backing up to go up either way. So if somebody could help with that or find out if it's going to be long-term for the construction that's going on out there, we'd appreciate that. One other thing I would like more information about, I see that Daytona Beach Avalon Park is looking to construct, or to, to develop a West Daytona Community District, Avalon Park. And from what I, I don't know a lot about them, but it sounds, it looks like that they want to be doing their own water supply out there. They will own the water, from what I can see anyway. And it looks like Ormond Beach may be cut out of this altogether. I would like to know how it's going to affect Ormond Beach, if at all. I don't know anything else more about it, but it sounds like with the water plant that you were planning on developing out to the west side of town, a lot of that would be for Avalon Park and Flagler, too. So if anybody has some information, I would like to know more about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Commissioner, I received an email copy from the attorney for the Timber Creek Apartment Project requesting a continuance. This is items 8J and 8K, a two-week continuance. I'll let Mark Watts, who represents them, come forward and explain that, and then we can entertain that if, if the commission so desires.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Commissioner. For the record, Mark Watts with the law firm of Todd Cole, 231 North Woodland Boulevard, Calam. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to come up early in your agenda. I don't want to keep anybody here that might be here for that item, but we've had a, a series of meetings ongoing over the past several months with some of the neighboring property owners in Indian Springs in particular. And we had a follow-up meeting with several of their representatives on Thursday and came up with a list of six or seven additional revisions to our plan that may make things better for us as neighbors. And so we're working on making some revisions to that, meeting back with them to make sure it accomplishes the goals that we talked about on Thursday. So rather than try and list those here for you this evening in the context of hearing and talk about unclear plans, we, we would just ask that you give us a couple of weeks to see if we can resolve some of those lingering concerns and come back to you, hopefully with, with a plan that, that meets some of the more, some of the requirements that the neighbors that could ask us to do.
Any questions for Mr. Watts, Commissioner? Does anyone wish to make that motion? And if so, let me know so I can open the public hearing in order to do that.
I'll make a motion to.
All right, hold on first. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. The applicant has requested public hearing items 8J and 8K be continued to the next commission meeting in two weeks. He has explained that request, and so Commissioner Sargent, it's a procedural matter if you'd like to make that motion at this time?
I'll make a motion to, for continuation of 8J and 8K for two weeks.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
I'll let me comment.
Commissioner Sargent.
I think this is a very good idea, and it's, it's nice to see that y'all are working together with residents, and I think it's very good that we're not rushing it through in another two weeks. I think it's, it's a very good move. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and at this time I will close the public hearing. Thank you. Yep. All right. Approval of the minutes, the minutes have been sent to the commission for review. These are from the January 10th, 2023 city commission meeting. They've also been posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
I move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, and we'll show those being approved unanimously. The consent agenda, does any member of the commission wish to pull any item off of the consent agenda? If not, I just need a motion in a second.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And this time, if any commissioner would like to comment on any of the consent agenda items, and I think I heard Commissioner Tolland.
Yep. Sorry, I'm never into this flow yet, so I apologize. Related to 7A, I just want to say that I'm, I'm proud of these legislative initiatives. I'm particularly going to enjoy the priority of the water protection and sustainability, and also the mobility plans that the legislation supports, traditional and alternative modes of transportation. But the other comment I'd like to make is on resolution 2023-35, I had a discussion earlier today with staff because in, in the packet, we didn't have a, the bid proposal for the subcontractor. I was a little concerned about that, and staff got right on it, so thank you so much, Alex, for getting all of that, and Stephen, and Joyce, and Randy for getting everything together. And you have that sheet of paper in front of us with the bid, and I just want to say that I, I pulled it because I have a son-in-law that has done this for a living, a side job, so up in Charlotte, and I really wanted to know if this seemed like a reasonable amount of money. It seemed like a whole lot of money to spend on tanks. And don't get me wrong, I love the Environmental Discovery Center. It is, it is my jam. It's what I would always support, but I wanted to make sure that it was reasonable. And after doing the research, the quality of the products that they chose are like top of the line. It should last for a very long time, so I feel very comfortable with that subcontractor's proposal. So, end of my comment.
Thank you. Yep, and that was 7C. And thank you for highlighting that, Commissioner Tolland. Commissioner Persis.
Yes, I want to comment on 7C as well. I was just very excited to, to see that we are going to improve the tanks and the new tank enclosure. I have grandchildren, and that's one place I take them, and they absolutely love it. So making it even better, which is what we always do in Ormond Beach, we make things just a little bit better. I'm just so excited that this is gonna happen. And I, too, Commissioner Tolland questioned the price tag, too, and had a nice, healthy conversation with Ms. Shanahan, so I think we're all on, on board with it. It's gonna be great. It's, it's just gonna be a wonderful place for our children to learn. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. We'll move to public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and ask the clerk to read 8A.
Ordinance number 2022-37, an ordinance amending the City of Ormond Beach Comprehensive Plan adopted by ordinance 90-36 as previously amended by adding an objective and policies for flood risk planning in accordance with Florida Statute Section 163.3178 to F, providing for transmitting copies of the notice and amendment to the state reviewing agencies, the county of Volusia, and any other local government or governmental agency requesting a copy, providing for public hearings, providing for conflicting ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-37, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on 8A.
I move approval of ordinance number 2022-37.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8B.
Ordinance number 2023-01, an ordinance approving the final plat for the Cupola at Ocean Side Subdivision, a planned residential development establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-01, read by title only.
Thank you. I have really only one card on 8B, which is from the applicant's engineering professional, so unless they're dying to speak on that item, I'll just ask for a motion in a second. And Commissioner, of course, if you have any questions, they're here and available.
I move approval of ordinance number 2023-01.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Let me just say, I'm excited about this project. I think I've said it before, I could practically give a commercial for a place that you would want to live, that's just a wonderful place in the city of Ormond Beach, the walkability of it, you're close to shopping, you're close to parks, you're close to sports amenities, and it's just, it's been an incredible project to watch from beginning to finally getting towards the end, and so I wanted to, to point that out publicly. With that, please call the vote.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8C.
Ordinance number 2023-02, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida vacating a portion of West Street, a platted public right-of-way lying west of 363 Putnam Avenue, Volusia County Parcel Number 4240-03-08-0150, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for recordation and transmittal and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-02, read by title only.
Thank you. I, I have one card from the applicant. If there are any questions, Commissioner, otherwise just need a motion in a second.
I move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Excuse me, any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8D.
Ordinance number 2023-03, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the City of Ormond Beach by amending the future land use map to change the designation of three parcels of real property totaling 4.25 plus or minus acres. Located at 264 South Atlantic Avenue, Volusia County Parcel Number 4214-18-06-0010, 225 Magnolia Drive, Volusia County Parcel Number 4214-20-04-0010, and 300 South Atlantic Avenue, Volusia County Parcel Number 4214-20-02-0010, from public institutional to low-intensity commercial for approximately 0.76 acres, and from public institutional to low-density residential for approximately 3.49 acres, providing for conflict, authorizing, transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-03, read by title only.
Thank you. And I do have a card from the attorney representing the project who's available for questions. Commissioner, I just need a motion in a second.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8E.
Ordinance number 2023-04, an ordinance amending paragraph C official zoning map of section 2-01 established of Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Chapter 2 District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the official zoning map to rezone two parcels of real property totaling approximately 2.95 acres located at 251 South Atlantic Avenue, Volusia County Parcel Number 4214-19-07-0010, and a portion of 264 South Atlantic Avenue, Volusia County Parcel Number 4214-18-06-0010, from B-6 Oceanfront Tourist Commercial and B-1 Professional Office Hospital to PBD Planned Business Development, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-04, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. Again, other than the attorney representing the applicant, I don't have any cards for EF or G. I just need a motion in a second.
I move approval of ordinance number 2023-04.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8F.
Ordinance number 2023-05, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a planned business development to be located at 251 South Atlantic Avenue, Volusia County Parcel Number 4214-19-07-0010, and a portion of 264 South Atlantic Avenue, Volusia County Parcel Number 4214-18-06-0010, to be known as the Ormond Beach Holdings LLC, authorizing the development of the property as a hotel and remote parking lot and associated site improvements under certain conditions, repealing, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-05, read by title only.
Just need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8G.
Ordinance number 2023-06, an ordinance amending paragraph C official zoning map of section 2-01 established of Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and official zoning map of Chapter 2 District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the official zoning map to rezone portions of three parcels of real property totaling approximately 1.70 acres located at a portion of 264 South Atlantic Avenue, Volusia County Parcel Number 4214-18-06-0010, and a portion of 225 Magnolia Avenue, Volusia County Parcel Number 4214-20-04-0010, and a portion of 300 South Atlantic Avenue, Volusia County Parcel Number 4214-20-02-0010, from B-1 Professional Office Hospital to R-3 Single Family Medium Density.
from B-dash-one Professional Office Hospital to R-dash-three Single Family Medium Density, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash zero-six, read by title only.
Again, I don't have any cards.
Move approval of ordinance number twenty-two twenty-three dash zero-six.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, commission? Let me just say, my thought on this property is it's gonna be also a beautiful place to live, to know that you can walk across the street and be at Dunkin' Donuts, or walk across the street and be at the beach. I mean, it doesn't get much better than that, folks, so, uh, please call the vote.
Commissioner Tolan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. Eight H.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash zero-seven. An ordinance amending the future land use element of the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Ormond Beach by amending the future land use map to change the designation of two parcels of real property totaling approximately thirteen-point-one-three acres, generally located south of the Platted Road of Pennsylvania Avenue and along the Platted Roads of Rosemary Street and Benton Street, west of Plantation Oaks Boulevard. Volusia County Property Appraiser Parcel Identification Numbers three-one-three-six-dash-zero-one-dash-zero-eight-dash-zero-zero-one-zero and three-one-three-six-dash-zero-one-dash-zero-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero-one. One, from Ormond Beach Low Intensity Commercial to Medium Density Residential, limiting the allowed residential density to eight units per acre, providing for conflict, authorizing transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash zero-seven, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, the only card I have is from the attorney for the applicant, Glenn Storch, and, uh, if anybody has any questions, but otherwise just need a motion in a second.
I move approval of ordinance number twenty-two twenty-three dash zero-seven.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions for Glenn? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolan.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And, uh, Glenn from the Storch Law Firm, thank you for being here, just in case. If you hadn't have been here, there would have been questions, but, and, that's right. And Rob Merrill from Cobb Cole, thank you for being here on those other items as well. All right. Now we go to eight I.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash zero-eight. An ordinance amending the future land use element of the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Ormond Beach by amending the future land use map to change the designation of one parcel of real property totaling zero-point-three-zero-plus-or-minus acres, located at one-zero-one Fiesta Drive, Volusia County Parcel Number four-two-two-zero-dash-zero-one-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-four-five-zero, from low-density residential to residential office retail, providing for a map annotation that limits the floor area ratio to zero and the residential units allowed to zero, providing direction to the city's Site Plan Review Committee, providing for conflict, authorizing transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash zero-eight, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. And I'll ask our planning director, Stephen Spraker, to speak on this item.
Good evening, Stephen Spraker, planning director. This is a request for a small-scale land use map amendment at one-on-one Fiesta Drive. The property is shown in the picture. It's an existing single-family house. This aerial shows the location of one-on-one Fiesta Drive. It's located at the intersection of Fiesta Drive and West Granada Boulevard. The applicant for one-on-one Fiesta Drive also owns the office at eight-zero-one West Granada Boulevard. The chairman in your package shows the existing house, and again, the existing office is residential to the north. The existing land use on the property is low-density residential. It allows four-point-three units per acre and allows a, a building size of up to point-two of the property. It also has a zoning that's residential. So if you look at the map, you see everything at Fiesta Heights has that low-density residential, and then everything along West Granada Boulevard has the residential office retail land use. So the proposed land use, the application seeks to go from the low-density residential to the residential office retail. And the purpose of the amendment is to develop a parking lot to support the office at eight-zero-one West Granada Boulevard. One of the initial concerns was how to be able to be a parking lot and not another commercial use. So there was a, an offer to do a map annotation that eliminates the density and eliminates the commercial spur of logic. So all the infrastructure impacts have decreased. Parallel to the land use application, there was a site plan application that showed a potential parking lot, and what it did show, the Land Development Code requires, there's no access on to Fiesta Drive. No wall would be required on the rear and side corner. The site development would require there'd be a meeting, there would be landscape buffers, and there'd be lighting analysis. So it's really important, the stage we're at tonight is a land use amendment. So as, as much as we want to get into the site plan, and, and the planning board did and provides some recommendations, the, the true question tonight before you is this appropriate use of land for this property? And there's really, there's two perspectives that was discussed in this after court. The first is that basically this is an intrusion into the Fiesta Heights residential area and shouldn't be allowed. So that's one perspective. The other perspective is it is a parcel along Granada Boulevard, similar to the other ones here and other properties without, within the city, and that along major commercial corridors, you should have a commercial or office land use designation. So at the planning board, uh, they made determination that this wasn't appropriate land use. They approved the application with a four-to-one vote. With that, they also wanted to provide some guidance for the site plan review committee. While not technically part of land use application, there was concerns regarding the existing fence at the rear of eight, eight-zero-one West Granada and the sidewalk along Fiesta Drive. So their recommendation was to require a wall in lieu of the existing, uh, wood fence. In two thousand seventeen, there was much discussion about improvement to the building and why wasn't, why wasn't the fence correct to a wall? So going back to the files, there was no change in the use of the property, therefore there was no way for planning staff to require the wall to be constructed, which is why you still have a wood fence. This application, there is a reasonable connection, properties would be joined, so if it's a desire to implement that planning board recommendation, the commission has that ability. The applicant provided a letter on, uh, January seventeenth stating that there is a tree that would prevent, uh, the installation of a missionary wall. They offer instead a commercial-grade vinyl fence, which certainly could be one option. Another option would be the wall and then use the vinyl fence to stand the root of the tree. So there are some options with that issue. The second issue was the sidewalk along Fiesta. There was a desire to include a sidewalk between the potential wall and the street. There is an existing sidewalk. The issue with that sidewalk has stopped short of, uh, West Granada Boulevard. The secondary issue, which the applicant has expressed, is there are severe grade changes in this area, and it's their opinion that they couldn't make the grades work in order to connect the two sidewalks. Uh, staff could get with their engineer and our engineer, if the commission desires to do that, and before the second reading, we can get you some information on that. But right now, they're saying they, they, they can't make those grades work. Another issue discussed at the planning board was the lighting. There are two lights, um, that were on the rear of the building, and there was some interior lighting. Um, the applicant stated in the letter that they've disabled, um, that light, and they've also put the interior lights, I believe, on a timer. After the planning board staff was contacted and asked a, a question by resident, the question was, why do you need additional parking if this property meets the Land Development Code requirements for, for parking? Uh, the applicant has stated they intend to build out the, the building, and they believe they need additional parking. So focusing back to what's before you tonight is really whether or not this is an appropriate use of land to go from the low-density residential to the residential office retail. Uh, the applicant's request to the planning board of recommendations are to allow commercial-grade vinyl fence and not to require the sidewalk. The applicant is here to address the questions.
Thank you, Stephen. And I do have some cards. Uh, we'll start with Terry. Is it Wimpy?
Thank you. It's glad they can let that picture back up. I'm on the backside of that. When they originally did this back in seventeen, uh, we were told hang tight, we were getting a wall because all the other buildings that, legitimate businesses of any size, not a hair shop or something, all have walls. Any new, uh, any new, anything that CBS came in, they make sure there's privacy. We have no barrier. They say there was no, uh, elevation in the parking lot, and I'm sorry, I don't have a, but I can show you that when people stand in this parking lot, they just look over and see what we're doing in, in our area. And before that, that was never the case when the other owners had that. So they build up, build curves, and the fence went down with the parking lot or not. I'm sure it doesn't show that because I've asked. But the main thing is, is you're gonna be tearing out, and I know by cutting a few trees, uh, we've had, we're gonna lose a lot of trees and a lot of blockage of the noise that are on Granada right now in that area. And you do have trucks that they do engine brakes coming into the Granada Nova intersection, and by the time you take out the house, trees. And if you're not gonna construct us some decent buffer from that and gonna tear out the block building, we are gonna, we're just gonna withstand all this, I mean, noise. And the, the lights are no joke. I mean, that's my, that's what I look at in my bedroom. And we'll wait a meeting, we'll, we'll buy, check the lights. They're at three o'clock in the morning. They're burning their brightest blue light. And even if they shut the outside lights off, the upper lights, uh, are on inside the building, and it's still enough to light up almost like a ball. Basically, all I can say is we see more traffic, we're gonna see more people. They want more parking spots, you must want, you're training on more, more traffic. So I think there's gonna be more noise, more traffic on our road, which we're already asking for some kind of speed buffer. And Mr. Hamlin does use that as a personal terminal. And, uh, so, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Carol Bonamy.
I live at ninety-eight Fiesta Drive. I'm catachroner to cross the street from one-on-one Fiesta. I object to demolishing the house at one-on-one Fiesta and putting in a parking lot. It's going to destroy the look of our entrance. Our subdivision is an older and established subdivision. Everyone in there takes pride in their homes and their yards, and rarely is there ever a house for sale, and if it is, it's, it's sold immediately. So it's, it's a really desirable neighborhood and a wonderful school district, and we all enjoy living there. The Hamlin Building and Parking Lot has fifty-nine parking spaces. On any given day, you can drive by there and you will see less than twenty-five cars parked. Now, that leaves thirty-four empty spaces. He says he needs sixteen more. Okay, so let's say he hires more employees. Let's say he hires twenty-five more. Okay, so that's, leaves nine empty parking spaces if they all come to work at the same time on the same day. I don't know why he needs those sixteen spaces when he can't build a lot now. Please don't ruin the integrity of our entrance. It's just going to be unnecessary and, I think, totally out of character with the way our entrance looks. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And next is Alan Bonamy.
Thank you for allowing us to come before you and speak today about this issue. My wife has indicated that we have lived at that property at ninety-eight Fiesta Drive for fifty years, and we have seen Fiesta Heights grow, and we have seen the neighbors, all of whom take pride in their homes, and we hate to see the entranceway destroyed. Now, what I'd like to speak to is the traffic problem that this is gonna create. If you've ever been at the entrance to Fiesta Drive and tried to get out on Granada, you find cars coming out of the Walgreens, I mean, the, um, CBS, and they're not all CBS customers. People are shortcutting the corner, and they're coming through the CBS parking lot in turn. In addition to that, people who are going south on Nova Road are turning right, so that creates more traffic. And as soon as that traffic, if you can get out, as soon as that traffic is cleared, all of a sudden you get the left-turn traffic of people coming, uh, north on Nova Road into a westbound Granada. So the question is, what's gonna, and then, of course, you have the whole flow of, uh, westbound traffic. So the question is, um, how are people going to, uh, negotiate if you put a parking lot in that, in that place that is being proposed? If you look at the eastbound, uh, Granada, you will find that the only way that they can have access to that parking lot is to go up to the corner and make a U-turn. That increases the westbound traffic and makes it even more difficult to get out. In addition, they can turn at winding woods if they're coming westbound, and then they're coming up the residential street of Quadro and out. And that has happened because I follow people who have done that. So there's, all we're doing is creating a bigger traffic problem in that area and, as well as destroying what I consider the entranceway to a really nice subdivision. And I hope you will consider, um, turning down this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then we have the applicant, Representative Paul Hollob.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm the superintendent of the commission. My name's Paul Hollob. I reside at six-seventy-five North Beach Street. And I'm just here to assist, uh, Mr. Hamlin tonight. Thirty-seven years, we've never made a request for commercial land use and zoning with the intention of never building anything, but that is the only way that you could get additional parking there. So there are covenants in this request where there would never be anything but a parking lot. But some of the things that, um, they're not, maybe the residents aren't aware of, first of all, we didn't just turn off the lights on the back of the, of the LED. We totally disconnected them. I had our electrician go out there. We did not know, I personally didn't know that those lights were shining in the backyard. Uh, so those two large LED lights on the back of the building had been disconnected. Also, we had the electrician going to the third floor because John didn't realize that his lights were staying on the entire night. And we had the electrician re-wire those so the backside of the building should and will go off when they leave at night. They'll still keep the front side of the building lit up. So I think from that standpoint, we've worked on correcting the lights. As you can see, the, the building that's existing only has one driveway, in and out. When you leave this property, you can only go westbound. The parking lot that he wants to do over in this area will interconnect with this parking lot. There is zero access from this parking lot, proposed parking lot, to Fiesta Drive to the street at the rear. Two Granadas. There's no access whatsoever. It'll still be just the ingress egress here. So we're not competing with, and I'm sure, sure that the previous speaker is accurate, where people come out of CBS and come from Nova and turn, uh, it makes it difficult to get out of Fiesta Heights. But we, on our egress, we're not gonna be competing with them whatsoever. And the other thing, uh, with this particular building is, these are some old photos, but you can see it was an eyesore in our it was an eyesore in our city. Probably one of the worst eyesores in, on and under now for so many years. And a lot of these photos don't even reflect its worst time. John got involved with it in two thousand sixteen, uh, and he only renovated the exterior of the building. He only occupies the third floor. The second floor is a shell. It's not occupied. It's not built out. But it's about eight thousand feet. And when he makes that investment to build it out and either occupy it with this company or another tenant, he's gonna need the parking. He can't make a million dollar commitment to do an eight thousand square foot buildout unless he knows he has parking for either his business or a future tenant. So that's the reason he needs to have the additional parking. And now you see what he's doing today. Even the landscape, I mean, that's DOT property there. He had to get a permanent funding to landscape. He's tried to be a good neighbor with the subdivision. There's no question it's a very seasoned, uh, and my subdivision's been there, I think, since the sixties. Those are the lights that, the LED lights that were given, uh, past us, the backyard of, of the neighborhood. If that people know, those have been turned off. The second floor is totally empty. It's a shell with just fluorescent lights. And we went in there and shut down the fluorescent lights because they're all on circuit. The third floor will now, should now operate where the backside of the building would go dark at night. And the only lights that would be on are the small uplights for the parking lot for safety. Just a picture of the lights. The fence issue, he doesn't have a problem putting up a commercial grade vinyl fence. His issue was, he was never bought up before. He's made multimillion dollar investment in this property. The, uh, a cultured stone, I'm sorry, a cast stone fence, a precast fence or a conventional masonry fence will not fit, um, portion of the back of the property because that fence is basically on the property now. So we can't get concrete footers in to support the type of fence. But he has no issue with putting a commercial grade vinyl fence, uh, fence up, which is, is just another shot going the other way towards the east. And the fence has definitely been there for quite some time, certainly before he bought it. And it is in rough condition. This is the property immediately next door. Same type of office professional use and backs up to the same subdivision. You see they have a white vinyl fence, a commercial grade, it's like a commercial grade, a white vinyl fence across the back of their property. You have the ability to, although I'm not sure why it's in this, you know, this request, but if you do have the ability, you have the ability to enforce the cast line, the precast nation. But he also had the ability to approve a vinyl fence or no fence. And he's not asking for no fence. He agrees that the fence should be replaced. But he's asking them to put a commercial grade fence on the existing property. And this is the property next door, uh, right next door to the, to the west. And that's a neighbor, that's over the, his fence is a neighbor with the same type of fence in the divided two property lines. That's the same property next door. So on the sidewalk issue, I have no problem extending the sidewalk, but it's physically impossible to meet handicap code and FBOQ code because as you turn the corner, that's what you've got. And there's just no way to make a connection, uh, to that sidewalk. So sidewalk has been, I assume like that for quite some time. And on the other side of the street, it's the same way. It stops, that's the other corner. And it stops at the driveway and it doesn't extend out to Granada. It's totally full with gray changes and there's just no way to connect it and make, and meet handicap code. Uh, just for reference, you know, historically, the city has rezoned houses, properties that were entrance to different subdivisions. Pendlewood, uh, Tamoka View, Pendlewood, these houses were rezoned and they're commercial. Matter of fact, another one, uh, Water Oakland was rezoned and somebody renovated the house and used it for construction. So this is the limits of the parking lot. And honestly, that's the most he can fit in there. Sixty, I think, seventy or eighty spaces. But what you get with this because of that is you're gonna have a tremendous amount of green space around the parking lot with full landscape plan, meet code, with trees and bushes and so on. And this section right here would be the cast, either a precast or a masonry wall at six foot height. Come here, come down the side, and then connect into theirs. We heard that some people didn't want a six foot wall. They thought that would look funny at the entrance because their, their wall, you know, uh, and it only goes up to about three foot plus the pillars. So in scale or size, if they want that, we can, it's not that exact wall style, but we can come in and do that on the side street if that's something they want more. We would put a six foot wall. But it would take a full site and interview approval. The lights would have light guards on it. He's agreed to shut it down, uh, at eight, uh, from dusk to nine o'clock at night. And all the lights, of course, you have to meet code with, with shields. It'll be heavily landscaped, uh, and it would be, you know, it would be totally enclosed. There are no access whatsoever. And he's, he would build it and he knows that he's gonna go to the second floor either to expand or to take a tenant in. Because once he does that, he's not gonna be able to park. Uh, there's also some space on the first floor that could be occupied. So he's gonna build that out. So that's the reason for the request. Um, the, the request has zero units per acre and has a, a floor area ratio of zero. So nothing's ever be built on this parcel other than a parking lot. And, uh, I think versus what's there today as far as the, I think with the landscaping and the wall and so on, I think it will be an improvement to the entrance. And we can work with him on the style of, the scale of the wall, what they would like, uh, the disaster consideration.
And Paul, did you mention the unity of title and then the restriction as far as, and I think Stephen did, but if you could just...
Yes, he would, uh, do a unity of titles. So there'd be one parcel, one tax parcel. There would never be any fallback to come back to rezon this for something else. I mean, if he didn't own the building next door and somebody was buying a home, it's historically, yes, if you live on, if you have a home, live in a whole new home on Granada, they have been rezoned commercial. And he's not looking to put a commercial enterprise there. But yes, he would do a unity of titles so that locks it up and it would only be used for a parking lot before that building. And he'd better ask for access into the neighborhood. I do understand what some of the neighbors had said. I didn't even know you can do it as you go eastbound a couple, quarter mile before you get to this area. You go into one subdivision that connects to Fiesta. I didn't even know that a couple of weeks ago. And I asked him if, I mean, he wanted to do that. He says, somebody probably do because otherwise you're going to Granada making, I mean, to nobody making a U-turn and come back. And said it certainly discouraged me. Uh, and I don't think how you can totally eliminate that. But, you know, he, he's, uh, he's just looking to protect his investment and get it ready, whether it be his business expands or he can use his, uh, the second floor. And that's the reason for the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions?
I have a question.
Deputy Mayor.
Um, if this were to be approved, and, and the first speaker spoke about standing in his backyard with a current fence, and I guess that's a six foot high stock, or shadow box fence.
It's a six foot high fence.
Current, yeah. Um, and apparently you can still see a little bit over into the neighboring property. Uh, would there be any willingness on Mr. Hamlin's part to, whether we, if this were to pass and either it'd be a wall or a fence, install an eight foot fence similar to what you did at Wawa?
Um, I can speak to him about it. I know that he would replace it with a vinyl fence. Now, I can tell you that I had a stand on the six inch curb to take a photo over the fence, of the vinyl fence and of the building to the west. So, yeah, I guess if you're six foot six, you might be able to see over that fence. But I had a stand on six foot Madison on the curb to take those photos. So I'm not sure that you can clearly see from his side.
Sure. I'm just thinking anything that could possibly alleviate any of those concerns.
I mean, I don't even know.
It may, it may help in the ways and wear as well.
There may be a commercial, you know, make the vinyl fence. We can look into that, um, for that section. And I think he would replace that, even though he's not ready to build the parking lot today. Uh, I think it still takes some additional appearance approvals and then site plan approval. I'm sure he would replace the existing fence now. Made a significant investment into the building and, you know, to keep it up. And, but honestly, he didn't know about, at least he told me, he didn't know about the lights in the back, how, how bad they were. He never goes in that way. He leaves before dark or just after. He's never noticed it. And I didn't either until recently. So we jumped on that and got that corrected. And if there's still any issues, they, they can contact us in the boardroom.
I know this is, Mr. Mayor, probably more of a question once we get the site plan. But would he project whether he occupies the second floor, another tenant, any activities after, say, six PM? I mean, it would just be normal office hours?
He said that, you know, he'd do the parking.
No nighttime operation?
Yeah, it's gotta be an office professional use. I mean, he does have more employees, a lot of them work remote. But there are times when they come there. And not all those parking spaces, uh, first of all, I didn't count fifty-six, but, to be wrong, but not all those parking spaces are functional either just because of the way that building thirty-five, forty years ago was designed. They never had the appropriate parking from when it was built, you know, late seventies or early eighties. So, uh, lucky that he was able to buy the corner lot for future. If he'd let us prove at least he could then build out the rest of the building and have it open in this parking lot.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just piggybacking on what, um, Harold just said. So the fence in the back, if, you said there's no way you can do a masonry wall back there, correct, with the footer?
You can't do it on the west end about ninety feet. Uh, even, even a precast, they come in with a twenty-four inch.
To go down.
And tunnel down about three feet even with a precast. Uh, so couldn't do it there. And then there are utilities as you go further, uh, towards the east. But, uh, it, it, and the next door office has vinyl fence.
Right. So my question to, if, if, if it does go through and if we do agree with like a vinyl fence, would there be any willingness to maybe do some landscaping on it, to put some trees behind it? I know it would be on the properties.
Um, it's very limited. The one section would be impossible because it's, it's virtually, uh...
I'm just thinking of the gentleman that spoke when you could see that one picture of his house right there.
I mean, if, if there's a eight foot vinyl fence, we can look into that. Uh, I'm sure there's something like that out there.
I'm just trying to think of another barrier for them.
But likewise, we would probably have to put something on the neighbor's side of the, because there's just no room on this side.
Right.
Uh, so we can look at that.
It's just a thought. Maybe something to talk, to discuss with the neighbors.
Commissioner Sargent and then Commissioner Persis.
Uh, for the record, I met with Mr. Hollob on Thursday and walked the property. And it is very tight on that backside. Um, but I do agree that an eight foot vinyl fence, because I don't think the wall is an option, up an eight foot on the backside. And then on those, uh, uplights, is there any way, just so that you have downlights at night, turn off the uplight portion so they're not, um, disturbing the neighbors?
Yeah, we can look into that. I, those of course are gone.
Those, but the, the uplighting right there, if you just have the downlight, you still have the safety of the parking lot, but you're not illuminating that whole top side.
Yeah, I think we can do that. Um, we just want to add some light in that back area. I know when we first moved in, people were pulling around the back parking and they're not seeing Granada in the later after hours. And so I know it's the down, probably just locking the G L light, you know, I think it's.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Persis.
Yeah, Commissioner Travis, you stole my little question about the, the lights. But, um, I, I wanted to also say that, um, Mr. Hollob, I, I was kind of on the same page with Commissioner Tallantou. Just about anything to make it look less hard, like a fence, just to make it look cozy and comfortable. Um, if this were to pass, anything that, I, I know you're so good at the landscaping and, and making things look nice. So I just would, you know, wanna do everything we could to make the neighbors, if this should pass, feel better. Thank you.
Just, just a couple of comments.
Yes, sir. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Yeah, when you're, when you're done with your comments up here.
Okay. Uh, let me go to Deputy Mayor Riley.
And Mr. Mayor, yeah, I just have one more question. So if you did do a fence between the residence or a, a fence or a wall or whatever, between the residents, any landscaping, the problem I, I think might be any, any landscaping you put on the resident's side of the fence, the applicant's not responsible for, for maintaining. That would be up to the resident if you did that. So I think we just need to make that clear that, you know, typically we require the applicant to maintain the landscaping, but if you're putting the landscaping on the resident's side, he can't access it. So.
And in the one section, I'm sorry, uh, in the one section where it's wider in the back, we probably could plant some type of tree there that has a canopy that starts up higher. So we probably could plant some trees along that side rather than going into the neighbors and library.
Mm-hmm, sure.
On the east, uh, that's on the west end, you know, it's twelve inches at that. It's a little bit different up there.
I've got a question either for Paul or Stephen. I'm not sure who. But the Bonamys talked about the integrity of the entrance to their neighborhood. Is it possible to keep the, uh, fence that is there now that, with the Fiesta Heights on it on the west side that matches the fence on the east side? And then incorporate that into the, the site plan somehow?
So the subdivision entrance wall is not being amended. And then once we get into the site plan, I think that neighborhood meeting is a real good, um, source to work out some of these site issues, including how the fence transitions. You know, basically, they can start at six feet towards the, the back and then, and then transition down. So those could all be discussed as part of the site plan, um, review.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, when we get to that point, you know, we may be able to get a precast fence that has that brick style, uh, potentially so, and look so out of line with what they've got there, if that's what they like. But, you know, we can bring them some examples of, of the type of masonry precast that we would put on the parking lot side. I'm sure on the back of them are six feet. But I agree with him that might look odd with a six foot coming down with theirs. So we certainly could work and bring some examples of the different types of fence that they would like to see on the street side. And that wall would be cutouts. We'd also have landscaping and so on from the door.
And then, I'm gonna get a little crazy here, so forgive me. And this is either for you, Paul, or for you, Stephen. Can you complete the sidewalk on the east side so that the neighborhood would have at least one sidewalk that comes all the way out to Granada? Is there enough room there to do that? Or have you looked at that at all?
I did not, uh, check. Like this, the west side I checked. We brought transit over and shot it. We just couldn't make it. I didn't check either side.
And legally, I don't even know if we can ask for that or not. But I saw that and thought that might be a possibility.
I don't know if we have the same telephone hole restriction over there to go. I didn't think that there is good picture of that. Uh, so that's our side. That's the west side. That's the west. Okay. So that's east. I think you're gonna have the same issue. The wall's in the way of making the connection. From him, you can make the connection, but we, we need handicap code.
It's just too tight.
So we'd be glad to donate to somebody else and put it in.
I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah. And it's been like this, I assume it's been like this for fifty years, uh, since the subdivision's been built. And maybe, maybe it did extend out to Granada before the wiring was done. I'm not sure. But we could check that side and see if it's, uh, easier to do it.
Um, any other questions, Commissioner?
I think I'm gonna preempt Mr. Hayes.
Okay.
And I think he's gonna tell us that we need to start readdressing that we're actually, should be talking about the future land use, um, changes. And, and the other, our discussion is more site planning. So I have a comment about the land use, but let's let Mr. Hayes give us our lesson. land use, but let's let Mr. Hayes give us our lesson.
City Attorney Randy Hayes. Your season's experience for the planning board is showing. That is correct. This is a, this is a land use map amendment. And actually, the features you're talking about, they're important to the residents, of course, but it's part of the site plan process, right? It's not really something that you address as part of a, a, a land use amendment. The planning board was pretty strong in their recommendation, you know, their recommendation included in Section Three of the ordinance, but that's not something it's, you typically do. I think, you know, you can certainly give direction to the planning director on things that you think are important, based on what you've heard this evening, that the site plan take into consideration. And, you know, they can, they can, they can make those requirements in the context of what's allowed, and if they're not able to reach in a court between the planning staff, site plan that is, and the developer, or property owner, then they can appeal that decision back up to this commission on that specific item, and then you can have a chance to weigh in on that. It's kind of an unusual, unusual procedural mechanism, but that would allow you to address those site plan features in a different form than what you really have before you this evening. Thank you, Stephen. Anyone else?
So, putting my little planning board hat back on, you know, Mr. Sprecher did say we have the two options, you know, we can consider it like it's a neighborhood, or consider it like it's up against Granada, and it's, 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 the use is changed. And looking at the properties to the west and the CVS to the east, to me, it seems like an appropriate change to make to the residential office retail, as long as we stipulate, I would like to stipulate, that it stays with the FAR as zero. So, that's kind of where my thought process is.
Okay. I don't have any other cards, Commissioner, unless you have any other questions or concerns. I just need a motion and a second for discussion.
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded, and then, I know we talked a lot, I don't know if we decided, because it comes to us from the planning board with a masonry wall all along the back required. Was the motion to include vinyl at a certain height, or? That was the only thing I think. Oh, and then the sidewalk was also recommended from the planning board.
I mean, the, the, the eight-foot fence would work, but Randy, can we address that here? Does that need to be more, like, once we review the site plan?
Yeah, I, I can help you out with that. So, you can make a recommendation to the site plan review committee that they consider, if your preference is, is a vinyl fence rather than masonry wall, that they consider that, whatever height you feel is appropriate, FAR of zero, you know, recommendation with respect to the sidewalk, you could do that as, as well, and then they'll take that into consideration, done missing things, see.
No, staff would truly appreciate that recommendation, that way we're following the direction.
But I think on the side street, on Fiesta, I think you'd want to work with the, with the neighbors to make it matching or close to, as, as close you can as to matching what they, their existing wall.
On the fence.
Different square of fence.
So, Commissioner Persis would need to include that in her motion.
I'm sorry.
And then Commissioner Talland would need to adopt that as part of her second as well.
Is that eight-foot, the eight-foot fence along back, and then on the side, work with the neighbors to determine what they wanted and make it, try to complement the existing wall?
I move approval with, that the applicant would have to have an eight-foot fence in the back, and then work with the applicants on the side for the six-foot fence.
Okay.
And just as a clarification, eight-foot vinyl across the back and a masonry-type wall around the parking lot, is that what we're talking about?
Masonry.
Correct. And then, whatever embellishment, we need to identify that that is Fiesta Heights neighborhood.
Correct, so, so my understanding of the recommendation is eight-foot PVC vinyl along, eight O line, western wall.
Right.
This parking lot has a requirement of six-foot block or post-up panel, and then this will transition to whatever is decided at the neighborhood meeting to match the existing.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, yes.
I can second that.
Okay. Randy, are you comfortable?
Yes, sir, and that would be your recommendation to the SPRC on those items.
Perfect. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Eight J.
I think we're on L.
IJ?
We skipped you with J, J and K, we got L.
Oh, you're right, we did skip J and K, thank you. Man, I'm just going down the line.
[laughing].
Can we skip, skip the line? All right, eight L, thank you, Susan, for keeping me straight.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash eleven, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a first amended development order regarding Ormond Central planned business development by approving and authorizing a planned business development to be known as Ormond Central Unit One Self-Storage located at one South Old Kings Road, Volusia County Parcel Number four-two-four-one dash zero-one dash zero-nine dash zero-one-eight-zero, seven-six-zero West Granada Boulevard, Volusia County Parcel Number four-two-four-one dash zero-one dash zero-nine dash zero-one-seven-zero, no address, South Old Kings Road, Volusia County Parcel Number four-two-four-one dash zero-one dash one-one dash zero-one-three-zero, and no address, West Granada Boulevard, Volusia County Parcel Number four-two-four-one dash zero-one dash one-one dash zero-one-two-zero. Authorizing a three-story indoor self-storage use with a build, building of a hundred and six thousand one hundred and forty square feet and associated site improvements as an allowed use within the Ormond Central property and by amending the allowed floor area ratio, FAR, from fifty-five thousand square feet to a hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and forty square feet for the entire Ormond Central property under certain conditions, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash eleven, read by title only.
Thank you, and I'll ask our planning director to speak on this item as well.
Good evening, Stephen Sprecher. This is a planned business development amendment for the Ormond Central property. The property has an existing land use of residential office retail, and the zoning is a planned business development. So, it already went through the zoning map amendment and the issuance of development order in two thousand seventeen. The approval envisioned a four-lot commercial subdivision with a spine road that connected West Granada Boulevard to Old Kings Road. There were certain site improvements, such as the landscaping along the buffers and then the swamp water pond. All this was master designed for the uses. There are also within the development order, a very detailed conditions regarding truck traffic on Old Kings Road. It restricted the building height from what the zoning precedent allowed, from seventy-five feet to forty-five feet, and established a floor area ratio, basically, how big of a building could go on the property, to fifty-five thousand square feet. This amendment has, has two key aspects. One is to allow the three-story indoor self-storage unit that is not an allowed use in that underlying zoning, that E nine, or within the development. So, they're asking for a use that, that's not authorized in their original approval. And then they're also, also asking to amend the fifty-five thousand square feet of commercial area to one thousand, one thousand three hundred and thirty-one, one hundred and forty square feet. So, because of the size of the building, they're increasing the overall square footage of the floor area. The site plan shows Unit One, they've done increased landscaping around the parameters, including the planting of large oak trees, and then they've allowed a perimeter turnaround. They've moved all the commercial uses, such as the loading and the dumpster, to the east of the building, and they've also tried to use this building to, in essence, shield other uses of the development. This project is unique in that they had two neighborhood meetings. So, they received a number of comments from the first neighborhood meeting, they went back, they redesigned the building, they lowered the height of the building, they added landscaping, they made substantial improvements, which the law received in the second meeting. The strongest attribute of this project i- is significantly reducing project trips. The original fruit law allowed twenty-four thousand square foot retail use, so that use could generate up to one thousand seven hundred seventy-seven average daily trips. This one, according to the Institute of Traffic Engineers, would generate two hundred sixty-five. If you listen to the storage facility uses, they say it's even lower than that. That's an eighty-five percent reduction in traffic. The building, as mentioned earlier, has been reduced to thirty-nine feet. Again, the development order, original one allowed forty-five, the original zoning allowed seventy-five, so they dropped the overall height of the building. In your packet, there are correspondence, concerns about traffic, incompatible use, the height of the building, restrict access, not to include Old Kings Road. The question of whether or not it's self-storage use is needed. The planning board did recommend approval five to zero, and if approved, it would be on the commission agenda for February seventh, and the applicant's.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen? All right. And Commissioner, any questions for the applicant? Does the applicant wish to speak, or? I just need a motion and a second, otherwise.
Mr. Mayor, the only comment I would have is just, you know, I, I, I do kind of like this use over other uses because of the, the traffic impact. I mean, storage units are a lot of times where people just take their stuff to die. They don't, you know, they put it in there, they forget about it, they never go, you know, they don't visit it, so.
Commissioner Sargent?
I just have a question on the landscaping, is that exactly how it's going to look when we get done?
[laughing].
Because it looks really good, I'm just, just curious.
Please.
Good evening, Joey Posey, four-twenty South Nova, attorney for the developer. And funny enough, that same question came up with planning board, and the representation I made there was that is, that is the landscaping we intend to have for the project, so, that's the expectation on our end, and, you know, we worked very hard with the neighborhood to try to come up with something that shielded at least visual look from Granada, from Old Kings, setting the building far enough back, and that, I, that was something I think, I was very happy with where the end result was, so, hopefully that answers.
For the record, I've spoken to Mr. Heester about this project in the past.
Commissioner Talland?
And I, too, have spoken with Mr. Heester about this project, and just as far as use goes, I think it is a preferred use because of the traffic, decrease in traffic, that seems to be the hotspot for, for all of us in Ormond, and I think this is awesome for that. I do think, what do I think? I think that the applicant really addressed a lot of the issues that, complaints that the neighbors had. The only, the only question I have, and, and I'm going to say is somewhat of a disappointment, was when I was really scrutinizing the packet, I saw that there were two arborists, and there was comparison, one was Don Spence, and the other gentleman I'm not familiar with. And there were some red highlighted areas of some discrepancies on historic trees. I have a lot of respect for Don Spence, he's a very good arborist. I'm just wondering, whatever happened with, how did you reconcile those two reports in, in how those determining what trees were taken down? And you know that I'm going to ask about trees, because that's what I do.
Sure, so, that was part of the two thousand seventeen approval. So, basically, our city landscape architect worked with both of those arborists and came up with a recommendation for tree preservation and tree removal. As I recall, the hurricanes did have some impacts to some of those trees, so if you recall on the report, there was some damage to some of the existing.
Right.
So, that, that portion has already been approved with the original development order, and this is basically supplementing a portion of that development.
So, that was primarily historical information?
Correct, it was a request to be included in the correspondence.
Okay.
So, whatever correspondence we received on the project, we include it.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Persis?
Yeah, I have a, a question for you, thank you, sir. You know, I love the picture of it, it looks great. I think the applicant's done a really good job about, you know, trying to do the right thing here, and it will, it won't be as much traffic. I, I love the, the trees, I love all the green, and I just want to make sure that the applicant will keep it looking like that.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
You know, because it's, it's, you know, and maybe even add to it, because it, it's such a pivotal corner, I mean, it, it really is, it's a great area, people go past it all the time, it's right there in Granada, and I just want to make sure that, you know, it will just continue to look nice and stay green.
Yeah, it, yeah, that's exactly right, and I, I actually wanted to mention something to Commissioner Talland, that I think it echoes both of your comments, that we actually added, above and beyond what the landscaping was required out there, seven mature oaks that are going to be planted at twenty feet. So, you know, the goal here is, you know, besides the dense vegetation, it's mature, it looks good from the get-go, and, you know, it's in our best interest, too, to make that visually appealing.
Right.
As, you know, part of the aesthetic of that corner, because, you know, this is also part of an overall development for, you know, what's going on to the, to the west and, or to the east of it also.
Sure.
So, we're in the same, we, we agree with you.
And where are those oak trees going, because I don't really see them on that.
And this one's hard to tell, but they would be along Old Kings.
Okay. Okay, I like that they're mature, thank you.
Yep, I think we're ready for a motion and a second.
Move for approval?
I would like to second it.
Moved and seconded. Just for the record, I spoke to Paul Hollup very briefly on this project, not really in-depth on anything, it was essentially, we're working very hard to address all the concerns, is what he told me, and from what I've seen tonight, I think that's, that's true.
Mr. Mayor, I thought, just for transparency, I think I spoke with Mr. Hollup and Mr. Heester both on this as well, created a pass.
Louis, I don't know how I missed you, I'm sorry, but I didn't get to chat with you on this one. But unless there's any other discussion or questions, Susan, please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and we go to eight M.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twelve, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a first amended development order for the Storit North Ormond planned business development located at one-four-zero-five North US Highway One, Volusia County Property Appraiser Parcel Number three-one-three-six dash zero-one dash four-five dash zero-zero-one-zero, authorizing a three-story indoor self-storage use with a building of a hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and thirty-four square feet and associated site improvements as an allowed use within the Storit North Ormond planned business development under certain conditions, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twelve, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan, and, let's see, I will ask Planning Director Stevens Sprecher to speak on this one.
Good evening, Stevens Sprecher. This is a request again for a planned business development. This property is located in the interlocal service boundary area. It started in Volusia County with some site construction that eventually stopped. So, today, it has been annexed, it has a low-intensity commercial land use, and it has an existing planned business development. That planned business development, or is called the Village Business Center, the development order was incorporated from Volusia County, it allowed a retail of about fourteen thousand square feet, and then office of about thirteen thousand square feet. The existing plan shows the self-storage facility, there's also an area for offices of about twenty-five hundred square feet. The site plan saves a number of the existing vegetation along the corner of Pine Tree Drive and US One. Interesting to note that there is, the access is not from US One, the access will be from the, the north parcel and from Pine Tree, so there's no primary access on North US One. The applicant has not asked for any waivers, for example, they're installing a guard masonry wall along the property. The building elevations are truly like an office building, no exterior walls towards. Planning board did recommend approval five to zero, if approved, it would be on the expedition on February seventh.
Thank you, and? The applicant's representative is here, as well as the applicant. Any questions for Parker? Commissioner, Commissioner Persis?
Hi, Parker, I have a quick question. This, I'm looking on page two-oh-two-two of my packet, and I noticed, like, the Storit sign is, like, in red, it says yellow, those are not the colors, are they? I just want to make sure.
The record, Parker mentioned, but sent people a reminder to have it. No, those aren't. No, those aren't the colors.
Okay, good. And is it like the photo showing, it would look, or is that what the colors would look like?
That's the proposed colors of the building, yes, and the monument sign would match those colors, basically, the base.
Okay, okay. That's what I saw, I just, I just didn't like that, I wasn't sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Parker? Parker, anything you want to tell us? I think Stephen covered it.
Yeah, I kind of live on the end of the street, at the end of Pine Tree, and it was originally, you know, planned to be perhaps a pharmacy and medical offices, you know, it sat for quite a while, and this is a use that'll move forward, and I think the aesthetics of the building, you know, driving by the US One corridor, it's going to be a great thing, so that's kind of my high points on it.
Thank you. Commission, I just need a motion in a second.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further questions or discussions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and Commissioner Tolland, I'm sorry if I cut you off there. Did you want to make a comment?
I was just going to say, I thought it was the right place for a storage unit on the, on the corridor, and it was very attractive, and I like the fact that you addressed the water drainage issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll close the public hearings, move on to resolutions nine A.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash forty-five, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a public stormwater drainage access and maintenance easement from Casey Edward Ford and Megan Marie Ford for property located at three-six-three Putnam Avenue, providing for recordation and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash forty-five, read by title only.
All right. And Stevens Breaker, Planning Director, if you'll speak briefly, I think we're all pretty well familiar with this one.
This is an item accepting adjourned due to.
All right, and the applicant's here, commission, if you have any questions, otherwise just need a motion in a second.
Mayor, move approval? Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine B.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash forty-six, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, approving the preliminary plat for the Tides Edge at Ormond Beach subdivision, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash forty-six, read by title only.
Very good. Commission, I don't have any cards on this one. If you have questions for Stephen, let him know, otherwise I need a motion in a second.
I move approval of resolution number twenty-two-three dash four-six.
Second. Go. Moved and seconded. Any?
There's too many seconds.
Questions or other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and we will begin reports, suggestions, and requests with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Mr. Mayor, I thought we had a very productive meeting before the commission meeting with the FDOT, so thank you very much for your time for that. On January thirty-first, you will have a strategic planning meeting. That's an opportunity for the commission to get together, review their goals, and identify new priorities for the coming years. Each of you have spoken with Michelle Bono to share your thoughts with her, and so we look forward to that meeting. I think that starts at five-thirty, is that right? Yeah. On February seventh, we have the Stormwater Master Plan finalization, we'll bring that to you for consideration. And then we're looking to review some additional items with you. Staff would like to have some one-on-ones to update you on specific projects, so we'll get with you to identify those, to kind of give you a heads up before those things come to the commission. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the city manager?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
Thank you.
Thank you, and City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Deputy Mayor Brierley.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tolland, you're on the spot.
Oh, I got a paper. I'm sorry. And next time, I'll try to cut it back.
I'm going to give her time, that's right.
I first of all, I just wanted to express my condolences to the family and friends of Dave Pizzo, our city photographer. His talents and kindness will be missed. And I'd also like to express a very deep sympathy to those dealing with grief and mental illness in either their personal lives or their professional lives, particularly our first responders. And I want you to know that you are supported and you are loved. On another note, I'd like to quickly share some activities that I've participated in last few weeks, whether you want to hear it or not, I want to share. Arbor Day was last week. The city planted a red maple at the Environmental Discovery Center, and we heard a very kid-friendly talk from an environmentalist, Joan Treg, Tog, I'm sorry. We were invited to a reception at the EDC, and the children that were present were able to craft and learn about plants and animals and insects all around them. I also attended the second Arbor Day at Holly Hill Elementary, where the Garden Club of Halifax Country planted a red maple tree, and we were treated by the Holly Hill Students' Garden Club, who gave us some adorable presentations, and Commissioner Persis' husband Carl was there as a representative from the school board. I attended a Main Street meeting, the group is gearing up for some fun events for the city. The FDOT listing session on shore restoration was quite informative. Starry, Starry Night celebrated art and culture and our beautiful history, and it was appreciated, and was very well done, albeit it was a little chilly, and I think the highlight for me that night was the hot chocolate in between the museums. I will be attending the River to Sea Loop Alliance Conference this Friday in DeBary. I'm looking forward to learning, hearing some notable speakers and learning how we can increase our connectivity of our trails locally. Finally, well, not finally, because I got a couple extra comments. I'm pleased that the Timber Creek Apartment Project asked for a continuance tonight. I would like to think that this is indicative of the developer's willingness to present a project that is neighborly and one that represents the high standards of our city. I also applaud those who have taken the extra time to voice their concerns, either through pen or person. I would like to just, just throw a couple things out there, that I wouldn't mind having a workshop on the museum and the Welcome Center idea, if you, if we can just, I'm just throwing ideas out there, and I don't know how we move that through. I would like a discussion on the signs and the panhandling, I think that's really quite creative with the city of Daytona Beach is doing and what Mr. Selby showed us. And I would like to ask staff if there's an update report on the Doug Thomas Way. I know that was an approved project, I'm just wondering where we are with that. And lastly, I heard rumors that Mr. Jones, Bill Jones, enjoyed the beautifully lit trees during the holidays on Main Street, and that he possibly may be, may be willing to pay for lighting year-round, and I'm wondering if we can talk to him about that.
Yes.
And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Brierley, you had one item.
I'm sorry, well, I just wanted to say, too, I was sorry to hear, and my thoughts and prayers with the Pizzo family. Dave was a very nice gentleman, and he certainly will be missed. I too attended the Starry, Starry Night thing, the Starry, Starry Night event, it was a great event. The Historical Society had a nice display of some old Ormond postcards donated by Ned Kraft at the McDonald House. And lastly, I did want to note that somebody from this community passed away recently, Greg Beer, who had Greg Steak and Shrimp on US One, passed away over the last week, so wanted to make note of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Sargent?
I'll try to be short. Recently, at the last commission meeting, and then in the Ormond Observer, Mr. Vowick, he was here, he's already left, Jerry, he asked the city to explore converting its fleet to electric vehicles. Just wanted to see if there's any other commissioners that would like to ask staff to explore this, and by explore, I don't mean too in-depth at this point, but maybe reach out to Winter Park. Winter Park did a case study June of two thousand twenty, and it was called Municipal Fleet Electrification. So maybe we could just direct staff to, just to provide us more information on that.
I think it, I personally think it's a good idea, at least to investigate it. I think we owe it to our citizens, just to take a look and see without, without spending too much time on it yet, and seeing if it's something that we would enjoy later.
So that's three, Joyce. Okay.
Another thing, Councilman Kent was here, and I don't know if we want to send a letter of support for the dog-friendly beach in Ormond. I've heard from several residents that are highly in favor of it, so I just don't know if that's something we want to send a letter before the February fourth meeting. I don't know if there's anyone else that wants to, would be interested in doing that. I'm dying.
Yeah, I was going to say, how do we do that, Mayor?
Well, I mean...
With these requests that we're asking, we're the newbies, so how does this work?
And where do you want, where do you want the dog-free beach? I mean, my understanding was it would be in front of the Krati Bicentennial Park would be a good location for it. That's not in Ormond Beach, so if we sent a letter that was just kind of in general support, and then let the county council determine where, I just don't know that any of our hotels or property owners want them chosen as the dog beach. It's only going to be a hundred yards, but it's like picking winners or losers for us. If it's not someplace outside of the city...
Maybe, supported with discussion, with, with further discussion as location? Can we do that?
I kind of like the Vicentennial Park, all because they already have a dog park there, so it would kind of make sense.
So maybe a letter in support of it at that location. Joyce, if you could draft something and bring it back to us for approval, maybe next, next meeting? Is that enough time? Trying to remember. Yeah, that should do it.
Also, would like to remind citizens that help is available by calling nine-eight-eight, which is the suicide crisis lifeline. And now veterans can now receive mental health help through the VA, even if you're not enrolled, not currently enrolled in the, in the VA system. With everything going on now, I think, you know, it's good to provide these options. Thank you to all of our first responders, it's been, I think this last week was pretty tough for all y'all, with a couple incidents that have happened. Thank you to staff for the updates to the city website, and with that, I'll say good evening.
Thank you. Commissioner, and Commissioner Persis?
Good evening, everyone. Gosh, I'm so sorry that Mr. Hollob walked out, because I wanted to say something about him real quickly. He gave fourteen students the experience of attending an Orlando Magic game, along with Ormond Beach Police Officer Greg Stokes. They rode to the game on a charter bus, they dined in the VIP lounge, and then they watched the Magic play the San Antonio Spurs. So Paul really made a difference in the lives of these children, and I know he doesn't like to get, like to be recognized, but I was hoping, I was hoping he would stay, he just walked out the door. But, but I was just really, I know, I know children, I know what a big impact that made on their lives, it's something they'll never forget, and he did just a wonderful thing. I also wanted to send my sentiments and deep sympathy to Dave Pizzo's family. I've known Dave a long, long time, and it was just a very sad, sad thing, and I just wanted to mention, mention that. And I also attended the Arbor Day event at the Environmental Discovery Center, and, you know, being a former principal, you know, these kids throwing dirt on planting a tree, they're going to remember that, they're going to want to do that again, they're going to want to save another tree. And so that was, it's just such a great event, it's one of my most favorite events that the city puts on, and it's just, it's just really important that we get our young people in, you know, concerned with our environment, especially right here in our beauties, beautiful city of Ormond Beach. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I went to Dave's funeral service on Saturday, I think it was, and beautiful service. He was a kind, intelligent, caring city photographer, and he created a body of work that will live on for hundreds of years. I mean, if you go in the Ormond Beach Library now and look on the walls at the pictures from hundred, hundred and fifty, two-hundred years ago, and you fast-forward three-hundred years, it's going to be Dave Pizzo's pictures of the city of Ormond Beach on the wall. He just saw the city in such a positive way, and his photographs, I think, reflected that year after year at the state of the city, in the pamphlets, on our website, and then in the videos that he would do as well. And he loved being the Ormond Beach photographer, he was very proud, very proud of that designation, and I don't know if he was so, such a professional because he was so good at it, or if he was so good at it because he worked so hard at it, maybe it was a little bit of both, but he was just incredible, and he was everywhere. I mean, we go to a lot of events that are city-related, he was at every single event, and he would get there early, and he would talk to people, find out what was going on with them, and when we would get there, he would say so-and-so needs a little help, or, you know, this person needs this taken care of. So he made us all better, basically, with his professionalism, and so it was an honor to declare him ambassador emeritus status for his memory, and to present his family with a, with a key to the city. You heard the testimonies of so many people that day who talked about what an incredible individual he was, and having had the opportunity to know him for the last couple decades, I think he will be missed, and it's just a sad, sad thing. As far as Arbor Day, moving on to some positive things, it was a beautiful day, that Friday. I mean, just incredible out there at the park, and we had a great group of parents and children who were very engaged. Joan Teague did an amazing job, she's so smart, I built her up a little bit, telling the kids how smart she was, but then when she gave her presentation, it was obvious how smart she was. And, Commission, we, those of you that were there, we joked a little bit before it started about doing a cheer for trees. She actually did a cheer for trees with the children, and that was awesome, too, so it was just a great event, and enjoyed it. Enjoy it every year. I've already recognized Bob and Bobby Coleman, they're incredible, and the Civic League, I think it was certainly appropriate for them to be recognized as Ormond Beach residents, that was a wonderful event. Today, I had the opportunity, and I see Gigi Galloway sitting back there, I'm not sure that I saw him there, but it was a tiger-rific Tuesday at Hooligans, and the Daytona Flagler Area Clemson Tiger Club met there for Tigers on Tour, which is a program extremely orange, and a ton of positive support, and those folks are having a great time, many of whom are from Ormond Beach. I didn't know Julian Lopez was a Clemson Tiger. I knew Dr. Cartlich was, and that group proudly claims all of those folks, and Gigi as well, so it was great to present them with a proclamation. They do a lot of wonderful community service things that people would not really know about, as well as supporting financially the educational institution of Clemson, and providing scholarships for local students who go to Clemson University, so that was a lot of fun, and enjoyed, enjoyed that. Transportation. Commissioner Tolland, you're going on the twenty-seventh to hear Billy Haddaway, former district director from the DOT, who's now a consultant, very well-respected throughout the entire state. I may try to get there for that, I'm not sure that I will, but I have TPO tomorrow morning, Transportation Planning Organization, and then... And then the roundtable of elected officials met Monday morning and they're going to have a transportation subcommittee. And Deputy Mayor Brierley, I was thinking about you for that with your years of transportation experience. They're also going to have a bridge subcommittee and a Nova Canal subcommittee. I'm going to be on the bridge subcommittee and the Nova Canal subcommittee. So doing transportation would be just a little too much, but if you want, if you're interested in doing that, and I have no idea when the meetings are going to be, I don't think they do either yet. City Manager Shanahan, County Manager Rechtinwald indicated he was going to bring that to all the managers to plan how to best staff those committees and meet. So that'll be, that'll be tomorrow morning, I think, for you. That was, that's what he said. Okay. So Commissioner Brierley, I just wanted to bring that to your attention when it comes up. As far as the bridges go, Chief Godfrey, I'm going to need your and your staff's help with the best ideas and options for how to coordinate the response between the Sheriff's Department and all the different agencies during emergency situations. Because every time it happens, it seems in the past few years, it's been a little bit of a nightmare. And I'm not mad at anybody about it. I just think we can do better and our residents deserve better. And I think you probably have some good ideas on how to make it work effectively. So City Manager, if, if you can help with that as well and allow the chief to, to provide some assistance on that, I would appreciate it greatly. And then as far as the Nova Canal, cities from Ormond all the way to Port Orange are dealing with the Nova Canal situation. And I just thought it was important that we be represented on that and I wanted to make the commission aware of that. The Ormond Beach Historical Society does an incredible job. In these last few years especially, they've been putting out their annual report, which I enjoy reading. I'm so excited to just point out a couple highlights to you. Proudly serving Ormond Beach for more than 46 years. They have no line of credit and no debt. They're a very financially stable organization. 4,780 volunteer hours and 458 members. And I think during our strategy session next week, we may talk about some possibilities. From what, what I can see, maybe working on the 50-year agreement might be the first step before moving forward and the easier step. I think that's something that's more doable to allow them to do the fundraising, but we'll talk about that more during the strategic planning sessions. And then I just want to give a shout out to Julia Bussinger. She has done an amazing job. I think this document really is her work in large part. She's done some amazing things at museums in other parts of the country and she's bringing that experience and knowledge to us. And I really am impressed with, excuse me, her professionalism. And I think she's going to take our Historical Society to the next level. So other than my closing remarks, which have to do with the issue that we've had a couple times these past weeks, and Commissioner Tolland and Commissioner Sargent, you, you commented on it as well with one shooting at the Advent Hospital. A 76-year-old woman, I think, shot her husband is the allegation that appears to be, and she's been charged with murder as a result of that. And then there was a suicide. I hope, and I know our first responders get the opportunity to have counseling if they need it or talk to someone if they need it. I just wish people would talk to somebody or ask questions to somebody or tell somebody how they're feeling rather than, than act on these difficult situations because it's harder on the people that are left behind and particularly on the first responders who have to deal with those situations. It puts them in dangerous situations, especially if you look at the, the hospital there where we backed up Daytona on a, on a situation that they didn't know what it was until maybe 20 or 30 minutes into it. But also, you know, in a suicide situation, it's just a horrible thing for an officer, a firefighter, ambulance person, to have to see or deal with. 10 or 15 years ago, in Flagler County, they had one young deputy that worked the west side of the county. And at night, he would come upon an occasional suicide. It just, you know, it happens. It's terrible. But, and then he ended up having a downward spiral in his career, started a drinking problem, and then he passed away in his early 30s. And I think a lot of that was because he wouldn't talk to somebody to get help for the PTSD caused by witnessing those types of scenes. And when you're young, in your 20s, and you're the only person out there, first on scene, seeing those things, it creates a lot of stress in your life. And so, again, I'm proud that in Ormond Beach, we have programs to help our first responders available. I think, you know, the, the tough guy or tough girl attitude of, oh, it's no big deal. I can handle it. That needs to get thrown out the window and you should be talking to people about what you're seeing, what you're thinking and what you're feeling. And don't let the peer pressure of, that's just what we do because we're tough, get in the way of that. So I don't know enough about it. Chiefs, you know more about it than I do, but I just think it's important that our folks feel comfortable getting the help that they need and is available to them, at least knowing that it's there and talking about it would be a lot better. The situation at the hospital, you know, that I don't understand at all, but it put not only nursing staff, doctors, first responders, all kinds of people at risk that didn't have to be at risk, where if there were issues, they could have talked to folks and handled that in, in such a far better way. So I've said enough about that and I'll leave it for now, but I'm sorry to end on kind of a sad note, but with that, we are adjourned.